Good evening.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, staff, fellow commissioners, and citizens of Daly City, and guests, welcome to the November 4th meeting of the Planning Commission. We would like if you would kindly please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Tallarico.
President.
Crump.
Here.
Edelman.
Here.
Satori.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here, thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen in the audience, if you want to speak on any matter, please fill out a card and forward it up here. We would gladly entertain your concerns and requests. Please know that I've received quite a few cards already, so tonight, in lieu of that, we would like to enforce the two-minute rule so that we can be courteous to everybody who has presented a card, and we would definitely like to hear what they have to say as well. So please keep that in mind when you come up to speak on a particular issue. Thank you so much. All right, the minutes not available at this time. I think October 6th was the last meeting? Okay, coin jump is not available. All right, so we'll go into item number one, use permit UPR-8-15-11455. This is the application by the Daughters of Charity Health System to amend the building configuration of the existing Seton Medical Center at 1900 Sullivan. Staff, Mr. Michael Lunkhausen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is a request for a use permit at 1900 Sullivan Avenue, the location of Seton Hospital, for the approval of a master plan related to the hospital. The city staff and applicant have been working for quite some time to develop this, and this is the outcome of that work. The Planning Commission is probably aware of where Seton Medical Center is, a very prominent site in Daly City on Sullivan Avenue. This is the existing campus. Actually, the site in its entirety that we're looking at tonight only encompasses this area. Take a look in the next slide of the, an overview of the proposed master plan. The whole Seton complex, however, goes much further to the north, but we're not dealing with any of these medical offices. Those are part, are not part of what we're reviewing tonight. What we're mostly focused on is the hospital tower area, the area to the west and to the south of it. This is a site context map. Of course, Interstate 280 is here, and the St. Francis Heights neighborhood is here, Daniel Webster School here. So this provides sort of a overview of the master plan and its context. The proposal does include, due to seismic, for seismic reasons, that the existing tower be removed. The reason for the entire master plan is, in fact, to comply with seismic requirements that are imposed upon the hospital by the state of California, and the removal of this would be replaced by several buildings located here. This slide basically just shows a sort of a massing study of what could be expected there. The existing hospital podium remains. We'll show a site plan overview that shows the specifics of what's proposed inside the master plan. So the existing tower here would be demolished, so this is a 10-story building right now that would go away. That's a 233,000-square-foot building, and that would be replaced by a number of new buildings. A new hospital tower, 155,000-square-foot building here, a new psychiatric hospital, 140,000 square feet, 90 beds, and the new hospital would be 104 beds. A new skilled nursing facility, the SNF is the short for that, 150 beds, 150,000-square-foot facility, and a new rehab building, which would be 120 beds at 70,000 square feet. So basically, the hospital is being, the tower, that is, is being replaced by these new buildings. The existing podium, which is underneath the existing tower, would remain and be converted partially to diagnostic and treatment aspect for the hospital. The parking has been evaluated in light of that, and we'll go over some of the parking provision for this project. So this is the site plan essentially of what's proposed. Now, as indicated in the staff report, the applicant is not proposing any building elevations tonight. There's no design review, that's a part of this. The approval is simply for a master plan that would allow this number of square feet, number of beds, to move forward programmatically. And design review, and we'll discuss this later in the presentation, would come back for further analysis at a later time. So if there's any questions, we can answer those now or wait till the very end.
Yes, Mike, could you define through the chair, sorry? Could you define the podium building? So you're talking about the tower being removed, but the existing building that is below the tower is to remain?
That's correct. So this is the tower that would be removed, but this is the podium structure here that would remain. When you, when you actually park at the hospital and you walk through the front door, that portion is actually staying, and the tower is coming down.
Okay.
Through the chair. This tower that's coming down and the whole building, is there any asbestos situations in the structure?
That would be evaluated at the time of the demolition permit.
Okay, because, well, you don't, nobody's...
There would be a mitigation for that.
Nobody knows right now, because it's...
The applicants are here tonight, and they may be, they may know the answer to that question.
Okay, thank you.
It's normally something that comes up in the demolition phase.
Thank you.
So one of the things, of course, that we look at closely when we review such a large construction project is parking provision. The city and the applicant have gone through a considerable discussion about how many parking spaces would need to be provided for each one of the buildings that was identified on the previous slide. The, just working through these from the top to bottom, these are basically those buildings that you saw on the previous slide. The hospital podium, which is actually 218,000 square feet, we've only accounted for 133,000 square feet of that, because that's the portion that's being converted to the diagnostic and treatment aspect. The balance of the square feet in that building are presumed to be covered by the space per bed ratio, which the city has agreed to recommend approval of three parking spaces per bed. So the parking count would actually be based on the number of beds that are provided for within the hospital. And there's a, a traffic, or a parking analysis that's been submitted to the city, and we've, you know, done some research of what other cities require, and this is actually the standard, it's sort of an industry standard, the three spaces per bed used by Kaiser Permanente, for example, and it's something that we feel is fair. So I won't go through this list in too much detail, but basically, the city, the current bed proposal is 464 beds, and the city is requiring 105,013 parking spaces for that. The parking would be provided in, and attached to the Planning Commission's staff report are detailed plans for how the parking would be provided underneath each one of these buildings, as well as in parking fields, open-to-the-air parking fields on the site. So essentially, you know, the more square feet that are proposed, or less square feet are proposed would directly, or rather, beds that are proposed would directly affect the number of parking spaces. So in consideration of the use permit, the city staff is asking that the Planning Commission consider several items in whether to grant the use permit, context to existing adjacent uses, of course, residential uses are the predominant use to the west, to the north, or of course, our medical offices associated with Seton. So that's the context that the use permit needs to be considered in. Site characteristics, utility, infrastructure capability, parking vehicle egress, economic development objectives, of course. So in relation to each one of those items that were on the previous slide for the use permit consideration, the city staff is recommending some conditions of approval. Of course, the site's already a hospital, so we know that the hospital is, you know, something that seemingly, to us, the city hasn't received, you know, any major complaint or any complaint, actually, about the hospital being there at all. So in terms of a use, it's one that's, of course, acceptable. We have recommended some conditions of approval. The use permit, the master plan, does give the city an opportunity to condition the project, and it's, you know, sort of a rare opportunity. The hospital doesn't get rebuilt every, or very often, so we've used that to come up with some conditions of approval we think are equitable in this use permit consideration. The first two are actually related to the design review that had mentioned previously, no specific buildings are being proposed. We do acknowledge, and this is discussed in the staff report, the visibility of the site is extremely high, of course. The hospital can be seen from most of the western part of Daly City, and so we think it's very important that the, that the campus receive a very high architectural grade of architectural quality, and so we're going to recommend a condition of approval that requires a third-party design review. This is something we don't normally do. Normally, the city staff reviews the aesthetics of a building, and in this case, we think that it's a good idea to have a professional architect do that. So that's one thing we're recommending. Also, normally, the design review committee would on itself make the decision about whether the design of the buildings was something that was acceptable. We think in this case, again, due to the high visibility of the site and the new tower, that the Planning Commission and City Council should be given an opportunity to provide input on the eventual architecture that's proposed. And so those are two things that we think are worthwhile pointing out to you, just related to the building design. Other conditions of approval relate to areas where we want to make sure that the hospital remains a friendly neighbor to the neighborhood around it. We look for things like noise, excessive light, things like this. So when we look in those, in terms of a hospital, we think helicopter use, sirens, things like that. So we've placed conditions of approval, for example, in, you know, the case of a helicopter that, you know, one wouldn't be allowed to be operated. There's no plan that this hospital be operated as a trauma center at this point, but should that change in the future, that sort of a use would come back to the Planning Commission and City Council for consideration, and a full noise analysis would be required at that time. So that's something we've kind of got out there. Emergency vehicle and lights and sirens, things like this, approaching the hospital. Currently, they turn off their sirens and lights before they reach the intersection of San Fernando and Sullivan, and we, we put that in the conditions of approval that they would need to continue to do that. One of the things they didn't mention is that the emergency entrance to the site, all of the entrances to the site don't change under the proposed site plan. So the emergency entrance off of San Fernando remains in its exact same location, and we've added a condition related to the sirens and lights. In consideration of the architectural treatment to the windows, of course, you know, a larger building like this has the potential to produce glare to existing residents to the west, we've required that any new windows, and this would be programmed into the architecture, would receive a coating of something to reduce the glare on those windows. We've recommended a condition of approval related to parking impacts. Should the parking that's provided on-site be insufficient, that the applicant be required to take a look at providing additional types of parking services, such as valet parking. Some of the major hospitals in the city and in, on the peninsula require that employees, as well as people visiting the hospital, pay for parking with the thought of discouraging people driving to the hospital using public transportation instead. And so that ties into the city's last condition of approval, and that's that the Seton BART shuttle remain operational so that people can take BART, as well as other forms of transportation, to the hospital and not drive cars so as to, you know, reduce traffic impacts as well as parking impacts. So the California Environmental Quality Act provides that a hospital that is undergoing reconstruction for earthquake-resistant structure reasons, basically either retrofits or reconstruction, they are categorically, those sorts of reconstruction projects are categorically exempt from CEQA. The city has, in order to ensure that there are no significant environmental impacts which would bump them out of the categorically exempt category, has required utility, traffic, historic resource studies, and a full traffic study was done for this project, and the traffic study recommended mitigation measures related essentially to providing pro-rata financial contributions toward new traffic signals at Sullivan Avenue and San Fernando Way, as well as South Gate Avenue and Callan Boulevard. So those are mitigation measures that would need to be carried forward or carried out by the applicant. One thing we've noticed or noted in the staff report for the planning's, Planning Commission's consideration is that the CEQA exemption actually allows a 50% increase in the number of beds. That would equate to 535 beds. The parking that we've laid out for you tonight considers only 464 beds, and that's what's proposed now, but the exemption could allow them to go up to 535 beds. Of course, they would have to provide additional parking at the ratios that were included in the previous slide, and that's also a condition of approval. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission forward to the City Council an adoption of the findings, affirmation of the environmental assessment, the categorical exemption, and approval of the use permit subject to the conditions of approval that are outlined in the staff report. City staff is available to answer any questions. The Planning Commissioners have, as well as the applicants are also present. Jensen &amp; Partners is the consultant to Seton that worked with the city staff on this, and their staff is here as well to answer any questions.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Lunkhausen. I'd like to open up at this time for any comments from any of the commissioners?
Through the chair.
Tallarico.
Yeah, I noticed you said each of the units would have parking underneath, but also there'd be other lots for the extended, like they have presently. Is that correct?
That's, that's true. So right now, the hospital has an open-to-the-sky parking lot here that would remain and be reconfigured to provide more parking spaces. There's also a proposed parking field in this area here that would be either open to the sky or structured, depending on the needs for parking. But we've essentially agreed to the parking ratios, and they would need to provide parking at those ratios.
Well, those buildings that have parking underneath the psychiatric, et cetera, are they going to charge the people to park?
I do not believe that they're going to charge initially. The conditions of approval require that should parking become a problem in the neighborhood as determined by the City Council based on evidence submitted by the city staff, should that occur, that they would need to undertake other measures, and that, that's just one idea, charging for parking.
But it hasn't, to the neighborhood, the present structure, Seton Hospital, has it affected neighborhood parking at all?
Not to our knowledge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, miss. Mike, on this, just let me get it correct in my mind. You said even with that possible parking way at the top back there, that they'll still use only the entrances and exits that are currently in existence?
That's correct.
Okay.
The entrance currently off Sullivan is here. There's an, it's off-screen, but the intersection of San Fernando, so, so, emergency vehicles, ambulances approach the site from this location, and the emergency vehicle entrance is in this area here.
Commissioner Satori, anything at this time?
Well, this is a very viable project, because I've seen the peninsula in Berlin Gate, they demolish the old hospitals and they build a beautiful building. I hope this will be similar to this, because this will be in favor of the citizenry of Daly City. My only question here is, if you're not going to demolish the whole building, how many floors will, will remain?
So the proposal is to remove the existing tower, which is this area here, and then the podium that's beneath it, which is generally here, if you can see the mouse pointer, would remain. So this is a 10-story building, and that would be removed, it would, in its entirety.
Two stories would remain.
No. This down here, I believe, it might, looks like two or three stories beneath, yeah.
It's one, on the south side, it'd be one story where the entrance is.
Right, in this area.
On the backside, because they have the ICU down below, it's two stories.
Right.
Well, that, this will be a very good project, Your Honor. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Edelman?
I do not have any questions.
Okay, I'd like to, does any commissioner have any questions of the developers? They are here in the audience, because there's two questions that came up, and I guess one of them the developer could answer. Can we do that? Can we bring up the...
Absolutely. The applicant's here to speak.
The, I want to ask about the asbestos.
Charge to park. Good evening. Would you kindly state your name for the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Tina Onn. I'm with Seton Medical Center. I'm the Vice President of External Relations.
Okay.
And my name is Thomas Yang. I'm here with David Alpert, and we're from Jensen &amp; Partners. We are consultants, we're both architects, and we're consultants to the hospital.
Okay. We had two questions that came up earlier, and maybe you can shed some light, Commissioner Tallarico.
Well, considering the age of Seton, I'm sure there's asbestos in there. I mean, if, I mean, if you haven't tested, I think you should, but let's just, let's suppose there is asbestos. That expands a lot of continuing things of dust and neighborhood and everything else. So do you know if Seton's material has asbestos?
We believe there is some asbestos in the construction of the...
So then we're going to have to take the proper screening, tenting, all the stuff the EPA wants.
It's a highly regulated procedure, as you know. They wear space suits.
I know. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page, the people are on TV, because we can have problems with that, and then...
City's Building Division, before it gives out the demolition permit, I'll make sure they have the right permit from their resources board.
But they're going to court test and find out where stuff is. Okay. The second was, I asked was, would the parking be charged or free in the other buildings?
Yeah, currently, as you may know, we don't charge parking at all. The intent is, because parking is free and open on that campus, not to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Ma'am?
Yes.
For the buildings that are, not the hospital, but the other ancillary buildings you've proposed, you, is there any kind of a timeline for development of these structures when they'll be built?
No, there is not. This allows us a future-looking campus, if you will, for the next two to three decades. The main project, primary goal tonight, is to ensure the replacement of the existing hospital and meet the seismic requirements by 2020.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
Commissioner Edelman?
I think, Commissioner Satori?
Yeah, just to piggyback on the question of Commissioner Rick, can you give us a ballpark figure on how many years do you think this can be accomplished, like five years, 10 years?
I think, you know, we're in the middle of a sales transaction now for the Daughters of Charity Health System, and we should hear the final news probably in the next month or so. The main goal right now is to ensure that we have health care through our acute care hospital and an emergency room for this community. You know, as Seton grows and writes itself, I think we're probably looking about 10 years from now, frankly.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Welcome.
Through the chair?
Yes.
One more question, if I may. The Daughters of Charity, are they going to be removed from the administration of the, of the project, or are they still part of it?
No, they will be removed. We are, we will be transitioning from a nonprofit religious corporation to a nonprofit public benefit.
So the Daughters of Charity have, so then, and you've picked up, and there was the whole problem with the contracts, et cetera, and employees and all that, and it's all been...
Yes, that will all be addressed and taken care of.
So we keep on saying Daughters of Charity, which is not true?
That's the current owner of the hospital.
Right now.
Correct.
Right, but in the near future, it's going to be...
Correct, it'll be a new system. That's correct.
Just so we know. Thank you.
Okay, excuse me, barring any further questions, I'd like to thank you folks for coming and addressing the commission.
Our pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, with the approval of fellow commissioners, I'd like to open it now to public hearing? So do. Okay. Being that I didn't receive any cards, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this matter? Not hearing any, I request approval to close the public hearing at this time.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
He's over here. Aye.
Motion and vote. Okay, it seems like it's unanimous. Okay. I'd like to recommend that the following, that the Planning Commission forward to the City Council the following recommendation. Adopt the findings as outlined herein. Motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is passed. Affirmed environmental assessment. I would need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And lastly, to approve use permit UPR-8-15-11455 as conditioned herein.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tallarico?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Edelman?
Yes.
Satori?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes. The motion is passed. Okay. Moving on to item number two. Is Mr. Matanka here today? Oh, there he is. Okay.
He's hiding over there.
Just wanted to be sure.
He was hiding behind the big chair.
All right. Item number two, use permit UPR-7-14-9291 and design review DR-7-14-9292. And we have Mr. Matanga, Associate Planner, and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Before us tonight is a request, oh, yeah, I mean, a request to develop a mixed-use building on 4619 Brunswick Street. As you can tell from the site location, it's located south of Brunswick Street. Under the project overview, the project is proposing five stories. The project is proposing five stories of mixed-use building on 1.15 acre parcel. The building will be comprised of 206 affordable senior apartments and 600, 6,451 square feet of street level and retail space. On top of that, there is a 4,804 square feet of resident amenity area that we provided and 2,719 square feet of leasing space and two-story partially underground parking garage. These are the entire rooms being requested by the applicant. Use permit and design review allowing residential development in a mixed-use building at 179 units per acre. There is also a request for two regulatory concessions, which includes height and open space. The zoning designation allows 36 feet in height. The applicant is proposing a variation of 50 square feet in certain sections of the building, up to about 75 feet in height. There is also a request for an environmental assessment, which is a sustainable community environmental assessment and the associated mitigation monitoring plan. As you can see, that's the project site, showing the location and the surrounding land uses and all the uses that are being proposed. This is the floor, floor plan for garage level two, which shows the entrance on the, on the north. By the way, the garage two would serve mainly the residents. And the garage one, floor area would be, you know, would be saving the commercial space because of its accessibility to the area, because the commercial will be located on the lower level or the first floor of the building. Under the parking garage overview, parking level one has 32 parking spaces that are more accessible to the commercial office component of the building and can be accessed from the western garage entry point. And staff also feels that should an electronic gate be installed, there should always be 18 parking spaces that must remain accessible during business operating hours. And a condition of approval has been recommended, which is included in the staff report. Parking level two has 27 parking spaces, which would be primarily used for residence parking. We've also provided a parking provision analysis. The commercial component of the building has 6,451 square feet, and our zoning ordinance require one parking space for every 300 square feet. And the requirement in parking spaces there would be 22. The residential component of it, which would have 206 studio apartments, would require one space for every unit, and that will give us 171 spaces. However, there is a senior affordability reduction benefit which the project would drive from. And the total requirement in parking spaces would be 228, which includes the 22 for commercial area and 206 for residential. And finally, at the bottom of it, we also add a 20% reduction for mixed-use benefit as the zoning ordinance require. And in all, the applicant is required to provide 59 parking spaces, which the project has proven to have on site. The landscaping area, the real landscape area, this is just conceptual, would be provided during the building permit application. We should show the detailed plan. The applicant has proposed a contemporary exterior architecture for the building, which will be visually prominent from the top of the hill and within the adjacent residential neighborhood. And the good thing about the building is it does not have any looming impact on the surrounding properties. The north elevation, which, which shows the front of the courtyard and adjacent properties to the north. As you can see, the building has some treatment which helped to enhance or mitigate the building massing. The background of the building will be stucco painted in off-white. And the brown areas will be panels that are smooth in appearance, all designed to enhance the overall appearance of the building. This is visual simulation of the, of the site prior to the construction, and this slide shows the site after the building has been installed or constructed. This is from the Mission area, from Mission Street location overlooking the proposed site prior to the building. And this shows the building after it's constructed. This just helps to compare that the building has no looming impacts within the surrounding land uses and the surrounding structures around it. Project provided 12,712 square feet of open space. The open space required per each residential unit is 150 square feet. So, since there are 206 residential units, we multiply that by 150, the required open space will be 30,900. Because of that, there are regulatory concessions that the applicant is requesting, so that you'll be allowed to have 18,188 square feet of open space shortfall. Under use, use permit consideration, staff is requesting that you determine if construction of a five-story mixed-use building on 1.15 acre parcel guarantees granting a use permit. You're also being asked to determine consistently the general plan. The housing element size the property as a potential residential development. In other words, that would help us boost the required housing as per state requirement. Under the environmental assessment, the project was reviewed pursuant to Section 21152 of the Public Resources Code and a sustainable communities environmental assessment as specified, as specified under California Environmental Quality Act, streamlining provision offered under SB 735 for transit projects. As you may tell, the project is located within the proximity of all the transport facilities that we have in the city, including BART. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the city council take action as follows. Approve use permits and design review and affirm sustainable, sustainable communities environmental assessment and the mitigation monitoring plan, and approve regulatory concessions. Finally, approve and adopt conditions of approval and findings outlined in the staff report. I may also mention that the staff, I'm sorry, a traffic study was prepared for this project, and major mitigations are all included in the staff report. The major mitigation I should mention is that the applicant will pay fair share of the installation of a traffic light at the intersection of Brunswick and Hillside Boulevard. That concludes my presentation this evening. Our environmental consultant and his team are here, so is the applicant and his team for any other clarifications that you may require, and staff is also available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matanga. Before we bring up the applicant, I'd like to invite any of the commissioners if they have any questions for Mr. Matanga.
I, I do.
Yes.
Through the chair. Mr. Matanga, so the parking exceptions that are made for the senior affordability reduction is allowed 75%, I understand that. And then, so the after-mixed-use parking reduction is an additional 20%. Are those normally compounded like that, or are they identified separately?
They're identified separately, but then they have to be compounded to meet the requirements.
Standard practice on this?
Standard practice, correct.
And then the other question was in terms of the concessions for the open space. I remember reading in the report that this was necessary in order to provide the affordable, affordability of the project itself?
That's correct.
And so, it, it seems like quite, quite a concession in terms of open space, and so we might address that with the developer themselves. But do you know if there's any specific reason why there wasn't an alternative that they could do as far as open space?
Actually, the applicant met with the Affordable Housing Committee twice. First meeting, the applicant was advised to revise the project to comply with all the general plan and zoning requirements. On the second meeting, the applicant had revised the project to include more commercial space, which, which made it comply with the general plan. And he then asked for those concessions. And under the state law, we can only object to those requirements if the project to cause impact to the community and because of health and safety reasons. Other than that, we may have to discuss and see how best to accommodate the requirements.
Okay. No, thank you very much. I just was wondering what the process that was involved, and it sounds like it was, there were some concessions that were adjusted. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Edelman. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Talarico, please.
I don't know if this is meant for our planner or them, but I'm not good at math, but 260, 206 units minus this and plus that and plus that, we end up with 59 spaces to park. Now, again, that sounds a little crowded, and yet, you have 18, 18 spaces going to always stay open for commercial. What do we do with the other 206 people that have cars? I mean, I just, do we?
Well, as identified in the staff's presentation, these are codified reductions. The city zoning ordinance allows a 75% reduction for affordable senior, and that senior age is actually defined in the conditions of approval, so there are older folks. So, the, there are numerous parking studies that have been conducted showing that this sort of a person, you know, in, in living in this sort of a unit would demand less parking. But irrespective of that, the city zoning ordinance allows a 75% reduction, and yes, it does allow the 25, the 20% reduction compounded on top of it. The city's applied the compounding, for example, at the 6800 Mission Street project, so there's, there is precedence for doing that. But it's probably not an answer to your question.
Well, no, the question is just, because I'm a little confused.
It's allowed.
It's then a precondition for me to get, I'm going to apply for a studio. The precondition is I don't have a car, because if I have a car, you're going to tell me, find a place for it to park. No. Granted, we have the great Bart, and we have Mission Street, and we have John Daly, and we have everything that people can have, but I still have people that are coming to, to rent an apartment studio with a car. Where do they go? The neighborhood?
One of the, one of the examples of an apartment complex that's been built using a significant reduction like this is the Hillcrest Senior Facility at 35 Hillcrest Drive. The city staff's been inside that facility on occasion, and we've actually noticed the parking lot. And granted, it's in the middle of the day during working hours, but it's mostly vacant. The type of parking demand that we see on completely affordable senior apartment buildings is significantly reduced, and the city code reflects that.
So, that's, allow me to play this through. I don't mean to beleaguer it, but it's just confusing to me. 103, 102 people don't have cars. 100, there's 206, so the rest have cars. We're still done, I still only have 59 spaces. I'm, I'm worried about, I was over at the neighborhood. I tried to go down Brunswick. I down Hillside, we've all been there. It's called the intersection from hell. And so, I mean, I'm just looking at the, the people coming in, they're advised, you have a car, you're, you have to find a place to park. Now, you can all say 62, most people stay home and don't, and then knit or whatever. Not necessarily. 62 is still a very good working age.
Wow, isn't it?
Yeah. But anyway, I'm not trying to beleaguer it, it's just, I'm, I'm trying to foresee a problem before we get to the problem. I mean, I don't like, I don't personally like to say, okay, let's wait and see if it's empty.
One of the things that, so this is a, I, I don't know if the word's unconventional type of project, it's not market rate, it's completely affordable, and we have some non-conventional conditions of approval, one of which is the requirement that the applicant provide, and it's condition of approval number six, the applicant shall supply contract for vehicular transportation for residents.
Oh.
So, the type of resident that would, you know, move into this building might be one and probably will be one that sees that the applicant is providing a van or a limousine or something like that that will actually take them to different places.
Okay.
The type of customer that would be attracted and that the applicant hopes to attract is not one that drives.
Okay. Thank you.
Limousines with affordable housing? That seems a bit...
That's a, not, not, as in the stretch limousine.
It's a very broad term.
Broad term. Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Talarico. Any other comments from any commissioners, and we can bring up the applicant if you get, want to get more in depth?
That'd be fine.
Sure. Okay. Can we have the applicant step up, please? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chair Sylvester, members of the commission. My name is Jesus Armus. I'm here representing the applicant, Angie and Associates, and also the principal of the firm, Alexis Givorgian is present as well. Can amplify in any areas of discussion as the commission sees fit. I have a couple of remarks I'd like to express, and then certainly would exchange any additional information the commission may find helpful.
Thank you. Before you proceed, we do have a lot of cards here. And when you have a seat, if you can pay attention to some of the concerns of some of the folks who come up to speak, and we may have you come back up again. But I know you can't cover it all, but do the best you can.
We'd be happy to return if there are questions that haven't been answered. And we can already address the question of parking. That clearly is one, and we're familiar with the area. It is a bit of a challenge to find some available parking at times. But what's critical here, of course, is that we are providing 100 percent affordable housing for seniors. And we're not simply indicating that the residents have to fend for themselves, as was just mentioned by your planning manager. There is a provision that provides for off-site transportation if residents need assistance to get to shopping, to get to other amenities in the city of Daly City. And so, that's a long way toward addressing the objective. And of course, we need to come back to the very fundamental point. We're talking about individuals that are earning no more than 60 percent of median income, who are age, at least 62. I'm 62, so I can appreciate that age. What is important here is oftentimes, individuals that are looking for residents of this sort are really struggling to make ends meet. And one of the ways that they can make ends meet is to eliminate those expenses that may not be necessary. An automobile is not necessary for everyone, and if the applicant is providing transportation as was indicated, that's an important expense that goes away. We're cognizant of the impact to the neighborhood, and obviously, we're going to have to pay attention to that as the project evolves, and if necessary, look at what other measures may be taken. What I think is important here is the city identified this site as an affordable housing site, when it adopted the housing element. So, it already contemplated that it would be an affordable housing. Typically, cities look to projects of this sort with various perspectives. One of them is the need potentially to have to provide financial subsidy to make a project viable. We're pleased to say that in this instance, no subsidy is being requested of the city. So, it's 100 percent affordable without any financial participation requested of the city. And I think that's an important element, both because it obviously doesn't impact Daly City's treasury, but with the loss of redevelopment agencies, resources are quite difficult to come to in these days. So, we believe that this is a great project. It's architecturally attractive. We've had a lot of good dialogue with staff, and as indicated, we had dialogue with the council's committee, and amended the project in response to the direction. There was concern expressed earlier about the open space, and I think one way we responded to that is by increasing the amount of what is labeled amenity space in the staff report. And so, the idea is that open space doesn't have to simply consist of outdoor area, it can consist of space where residents can gather, can congregate, where services can be provided, and other amenities addressed. So, we believe that on balance, given that this project is consistent with your general plan, it follows your zoning requirements, and the concessions that are being requested are essentially an effort on the part of the state to balance affordability with other requirements, and to allow affordability, in effect, to proceed if the concessions being requested do not create an adverse impact on the environment. And as noted in the assessment, there are no adverse impact on the environment as a result of those concessions. So, we would respectfully request that you recommend to the city council approval of this project so that it can be moved forward, and that we can begin serving the many, many seniors in Daly City and in San Mateo County that are desperately in need of housing. Happy to answer any questions.
I'm through the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Jesus. Commissioner Edelman, yes.
So, I have another question then, in terms about energy efficiency of the building itself. Have there been any specific actions or designs that were, would address water-saving and electricity programs like solar or some, whatever you might be doing?
We are complying with all of the standards, and certainly through the building permit process, the staff will identify any provisions with the energy code and the like that need to be conformed with. And on water conservation, of course, everybody's paying close attention to water need, and this will be designed, again, consistent with the city's regulations. You'll note that in the letter from the Green Belt Alliance, which supports this project, the project is commended for also providing electric charging stations for those vehicles that are electrically powered. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something? Well, I consider this project as a very monumental one, because considering that I've seen the place. The place is a little bit drily, at the same time, it's blighted. But, you know, if you're going to remove all those boulders, all those rocks and soils, you know, it's thousands of tons of that, so you have to level it up. To me, this would be a very, a good model of mixed use, or I would say, smart growth in that area. And considering that area is, all places of life is there. You have the church, you have BART, you have the stores, practically everything is there. That's why this will be a good place for the seniors. They don't have to take a ride going to San Francisco or going anywhere. Cinema is very near, you have the restaurants there, everything's there. So, it is a good place for the senior citizen in the future. So, to me, this will be, I would say, a monumental project. It can be followed through the letter. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Sotory. Commissioner Talarico.
Traffic nut. I get stuck in it a lot. I was back east, went to Boston and New York, Albany and that, and I can tell you, it's as bad as ever. But I did notice in the conditions, you were going to put a light on at Brunswick and Hillside. Okay, I was just over there yesterday, and coming down Brunswick now, there's a stop sign. To get out on Hillside, if the light is on Hillside to Mission Red, it backs up all the way. So, those lights will be synchronized, so we don't end up with jam. Is it dealing with Caltrans?
Let me clarify, the project per se is not responsible for constructing traffic signals.
That's correct. They're paying a fair share.
Because the impacts, the impacts already exist. The project, however, as was just mentioned, is responsible for its fair share. And so, we will be making a financial contribution.
All right, now, next question is, your company did the traffic studies?
No, no. The traffic consultants were retained by the city to evaluate.
So, you know, there's a school there and a church.
Absolutely.
And they come down Wellington, it's one way, that's the way. So, every morning from eight, there's people dropping off, and I think it's a K through eight school. They've got little munchkins and all that. And then, at two o'clock or three, they come, so cars are coming down, picking them up and all that. So, we're just trying to get the traffic flow. So, they come down and take a left and go down into Mission. It's a congested area. It's very, very congested. I also want to know, you, there's commercial, you keep on saying commercial businesses on the bottom floor and that, is that commercial relating to the apartment complex, or cleaners and things like that?
Variety, it's not related directly to the residents, but...
But they're going to take up parking?
There's a leasing office, but that would have minimal staff.
But they're going to have parking into their garages.
Yes, and that's why it was indicated earlier, there's some reservation of spaces for that purpose.
And yeah, we'll take a look at the ultimate parking garage design. You know, we're going to, the idea is if there's a, you know, like a gate that separates the resident from the retail area, right, we need to choose a logical place for that.
So, the only thing, the other question I would have, has anybody shown a study on the accidents at that intersection, on Hillside and Brunswick?
It's not something that was evaluated as part of the environmental assessment.
We don't know.
Sequel requires that the applicant take a look at traffic conditions, not necessarily accidents that have occurred.
Absolutely. In fact, the traffic engineer consulting firm that did the study also examined other nearby intersections to make certain that there were no implications to other streets, and took into account recent studies that the city had commissioned for other projects nearby. So, all of that was input to the analysis, which resulted in the identification of the fair share for this project.
One more question if I may. You say affordable housing, do you know approximately the price of the studio apartments would be?
That hasn't been determined just yet, because it obviously will vary, but the important point is that it is going to be for individuals that are earning less, 60 percent or less of median income.
Which is?
And it varies by household. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have the figure right in front of me. But the other, the other point to note is, it will comply with both state and federal laws as to the maximum amount that the tenant may require.
Would that be a selection by lottery, or people?
It would be by lottery.
And obviously, we hope that we're able as promptly as possible to serve the need that already exists in your community.
Thank you very much.
Alan, if I may.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Talarico. Commissioner Crump?
Actually, this question, I think, belongs to you, Mike. Piggybacking off what Howard asked about energy-saving measures, in new construction, and particularly the number of units involved here, do we require LED lighting and HETs in the project?
Well, the city has a green building ordinance that the project would have to comply with, and if those things are required, yes, they would, those would have to be incorporated in its ultimate design.
My experience has been also, when you are filing for your building permits, the analysis takes that into account and makes certain that energy standards are satisfied.
Understood. I know they're coming, I know it's coming up down the line. There is a statutory date on the HETs in projects over a certain size, and I just wondered if it was now part of the code.
Thank you, Commissioner Crump. I actually had two questions for you, sir, and Commissioner Talarico already proposed one of them, and that was on the 100 percent affordability and what other requirements, and I got that answer already. My second question is a personal question. Do you have a car?
Do I have a car?
Yeah.
Yes.
And you're 62.
Do you have a parking space?
He wouldn't qualify to live in a...
Oh, okay, all right. Well, I was kind of wondering...
But let me, let me amplify if I may.
I have three.
If I live near BART, I would not. And that's a huge difference, because, you know, you're talking about a significant expense to own and operate and buy insurance on a vehicle, an expense that I might forego if I had meaningful options.
Affordability index.
Yes.
I just have concern, because who would get these, the few who would get these would be by lottery also, the 59 spaces for the residents?
The way that that would be allocated among residents hasn't been determined.
Okay.
Quite possibly. The thought is, is that there's a sufficient number of spaces, given the, again, the type of user here, and there shouldn't need, that shouldn't need to happen.
Okay. I'm just concerned, because we're looking at a density of 206 units, studios, no less, and I think it was said earlier, where they're going to go, and I feel it may just fall off onto the streets, which I think is already an issue right now, but it's just my thoughts. I have no further questions of Mr. Jesus. I thank you so much.
I'll have my pen ready for...
Yes, sir.
...in event there are questions, and be happy to return.
Okay, with my fellow commissioner's permission, I would like to now open it up to a public hearing.
You got it.
Okay, the first card I have is from Angelo Marquez. Yes, Mr. Marquez, come on up, please.
Good evening, thank you for having us. My earlier question was actually answered already, that the city will not be subsidizing anything, and it won't be federally subsidized, I believe. But I do have another question. Is there a proposed timeline in terms of, if this does push through, how long will the construction take? Because being part of the school, we do have to know, how will it affect us? And being part of the parish also, because traffic, it's not just Monday to Friday. We have the weekend services all, as well. And they go on all throughout the morning to early afternoon, and even now to nighttime. So, that would be something that would be valuable to us to know. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Marquez, I know this, I'm sorry for everyone. Mr. Marquez was representing Our Lady of Perpetual Help Church, that's why you brought the question. But you also had a question on here, and would there be Section 8 housing?
Yes.
Has that been answered? Can we address that?
I don't think there's a Section 8 provision in this proposal, no.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Marquez. Next card I have is Anna Beyond Dini, Beyond Dini. And it's Ms. Anna, and you're representing yourself. And please.
I think it's commendable that you, these apartments aren't going to be going up, but the problem that I have, which you brought up before, is parking. The way it is right now, without you building anything, is a disaster trying to find a parking space. I live in, I have an apartment in the Chelsea Court there, and I'm afraid to come over. I mean, I own it, I'm sorry, I don't live there, I own it. I'm afraid to come over because I can't find a parking space now. I don't know what it's going to be when... 59 spaces for 228 apartments. I cannot imagine, and I wouldn't, I might sell the darn apartment. That's my concern, the space. And I wish you would consider it very, very, very tight, and if there's anything you can do to get more spaces, whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Beyond Dini. Next card we have is a Lenobia Leiva. Hi.
Lenobia Leiva.
Ah, welcome.
Today is the...
Sorry. Take your time. And Ms. Leiva is representing Our Lady of Perpetual Help.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
My main concern, sir, is that we already hurting a lot of earth, digging and digging for more buildings, making people richer, and nature is disappearing. Mountains, those precious rock that we have around the church for years, 100 years maybe, and on top of that, we have pollution, buildings, traffic, dust, and all this stuff coming. So, this is a small place for such a, make people richer and richer. And that's my main concern. And when the time comes for parking, it will be terrible. It's already terrible. And also, for the seniors, nobody will stop this company to charge $2,000 for an apartment over there. See, for poor people, I don't think so. Thank you.
Could I answer? Could a developer answer? Could a developer?
Staff can answer that, in terms of the affordability, absolutely. There's a condition of approval that requires permanent affordability.
When somebody says perpetual help, are they representing the church or the nearly members?
Sure. I want to go to the condition first.
There's a condition of approval that takes care of that.
So, the planning commission's aware, there's a very important condition of approval. It also relates to the open space, and it's condition of approval number 22. That's been added to this project. You won't see a condition of approval like this on a market rate project. When the city grants such a large reduction in parking, again, it's allowed by the city code, but when it grants it, we need to make sure that the project is going to be affordable in perpetuity. And so, the way that we do that is through the affordable housing agreement. This is recorded at the county, it's a, you know, it's a sort of thing that's a legal requirement. And there's monitoring that would occur on the city's behalf. The city would conduct monitoring to make sure that the affordability is being complied with. I wanted to, just while we're on the subject, touch on the open space. Yes, it's a large reduction in the open space, but this condition of approval for this project requires that services be provided to residents. So, normally, that wouldn't be required. So normally, that wouldn't be required. And of course, that's a cost to the building operator that would be, you know, incurred forever. And so these residents, unlike the residents of a regular apartment or condominium complex, would be the beneficiaries of that. And so that's the trade-off in the open space that would be provided. So it's a different sort of a...
So that's answering, answering this young lady's thing. It's locked in.
It's locked in.
To, with safety. And I think that's, we're all concerned, so Michael answered that very well. Thank you, Michael.
Along those lines, Mike, if you can advise, is going to be any HOA dues or anything incurred by the seniors?
No, because this is an apartment building, so there's no, there's no condominium.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, next is Christina, Christina Beyond Dini. Representing herself.
Hello.
Hi.
Thanks for having me this evening. So I would like to give you all a live view of the day-to-day living on Chelsea Court, trying to turn onto Brunswick, which is directly across from where this building is going to be. It's pretty much impossible, like they said, the timeline, anywhere from seven to nine in the morning, in the afternoon, impossible to get off of that little street onto Hillside. And it can take up to fifteen minutes just to get into that line of traffic, to stop at the stop sign, to go right on, to then turn right on to Hillside to get to Mission. It can take up to fifteen minutes just to do that, already, as it stands. So traffic, that's the live view of what the day looks like in traffic. Also, as a resident there, parking is completely impossible. And my car has been hit like five times parked there, just because it's so tight. People cannot fit through. I have pictures, if you'd like to see. It's like double, triple parking there. And I've been blocked in multiple times, which makes me not be able to get to work. I am a teacher, can't get to work to teach the young people. That is pretty bad. And so I think that they're just proposing the very bare bones minimum by law that they can get away with. And I think that that is the biggest thing that is going to be a problem with this, and especially saying that the mixed use. So if that is, whatever that looks like, there's going to be a lot of people coming in and a lot more traffic, and it's already unsafe. People walk by all the time, there are kids walking, high school students, the elementary school students are walking down the street right there all the time, and it's all, people already drive like cuckoo birds, like right there. There's, I've seen accidents, pedestrians hit at that corner of Hillside and Brunswick, and it's just, it's a T-intersection. I just don't think it really makes sense for a flow when you're thinking about a city and how it's planned. And that one way on the other side on Wellington is just going to make it really impossible to flow. Oh, and it will block my ocean view, just so you know. They said that it wouldn't. They said it's not impacting any neighbors, and it's absolutely blocking my ocean view. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next, Bob Beyond Dini. Come on up.
Number two.
I think we've got the whole family.
How do I follow that one? You know, I want to thank the commissioners for bringing up that point because it's a real, it's a real deal. And I know we, we want smart growth. And to me, this is not smart growth, squeezing in two-hundred-and-some units right there in a place that's already impossible to get into Chelsea Alley. And I don't go over there either for that very reason, because there is no parking today, right now. This is, this is just, I tell you the truth, I read this, I thought it was like a joke. I can't believe this is even being proposed, to be honest with you. And there is no parking. It takes forever to get down, down between, to get onto Mission Street where this, maybe this light is going to be put in, and that's not, that's still going to back it up. And it's a real emergency deal. Emergency vehicles have had trouble getting into Chelsea Court. It's a safety issue. It's, if you go over there, you will see, and I don't know who went over there, what traffic expert went over there. I am not a traffic expert, but I go over there, and it's a nightmare. And emergency vehicles cannot get down Chelsea Alley because there's so many people parked in there. And this, there's no way these people, they're just going to, you know, there's just no parking, that's it. You brought it up, that's, that's the main thing. Not to mention, property values are going to go down, the people are already there. So we talk about growth, but what about the people already there? And then, yeah, no open space, good, let's limit that too. And as far as old people, I'm within two weeks of being, that I could qualify for that, exactly, one of those places. And, and I couldn't walk from that place to, down to the BART. It's not like a hop skip, you know, it's a long walk. I couldn't do that. So people need vehicles, and this is, to me, this, this needs to be downsized by, I'd say eighty percent, you know? But that's my opinion, and, and I really believe it's a safety issue and, and quality of life for the people who are there and anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Beyond Dini. Next, we have Sheila Ortega. And you're representing yourself or the Our Lady of Perp...
I'm the Vice Principal of Our Lady of Perpetual Help School.
Okay, thank you.
And all of the issues that have been brought up already, the school is deeply concerned about the safety of our students crossing in the crosswalk. Most, even though if you're addressing, you know, the senior parking and so forth, the concern is these, the commercial use and the flow of traffic going in and out of that, and its impact to our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jesus, we're going to move your card later on in the back, okay? Because you spoke already, okay? I have your card here. Yes, okay. Next item we have is, next, next person is Natalie Dean from Green Belt Alliance. Is Natalie here? Hi, come on up.
Wait one minute.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Commission Chair Sylvester and members of the Daly City Planning Commission. My name's Natalie Dean, and I'm a volunteer with Green Belt Alliance. For over fifty years, Green Belt Alliance has been the champion of the places that make the Bay Area special, and by defending, doing that by defending natural and agricultural landscapes from sprawl and helping create great cities and neighborhoods. Our development endorsements have helped improve more than one-hundred-and-forty neighborhoods around the region. Green Belt Alliance is pleased to endorse the proposed Brunswick Street Senior Apartments. It's a prime example of sustainable and equitable transit-oriented development. This project will support the local economy, relieve development pressure on our open space, and provide other benefits. We commend AMG and Associates for this proposal to transform a vacant one-point-one-five-acre lot into two-hundred-and-six affordable homes for low-income seniors, as well as for creating new community space and retail storefront. These new homes will help address the region's pressing need for more affordable homes, especially for our growing senior population. San Mateo County has the highest cost of living in the state for seniors, and it is expecting a seventy-six percent increase in its senior population in the coming years, making the need all the more pressing. In addition to addressing affordable, housing affordability, the Brunswick Street Senior Apartments has several other laudable features. Most importantly, it uses a compact, mixed-use development pattern, and is situated in a walkable neighborhood with amenities and quality transportation choices. Not only does this improve community health, minimize traffic, and reduce air pollution, they enliven the streetscape, and supports nearby business. To make this proposal even stronger, we would encourage the inclusion of free or subsidized transit passes in all new residence, residential development in Daly City, particularly those developments serving people most likely to use transit. This project would be an inspiration.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Sorry. All right. Next one is Reverend Augusto Vilote, representing Our Lady of Perpetual. Hi, good evening.
Good evening, sir. I'm the pastor of Our Lady of Perpetual Help, and the project was good, but as we heard their concern, and also my concern, and also my parish's concern, so I think people spoke, and then for your consideration, but as I've said, it was a very good project for our senior housing, but that's the, that's the fact, the profit and those safety issues, especially for our schoolchildren. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Reverend. Next person is Maria Manzano.
Maria Manzano.
Maria Manzano, okay, pardon me. And you're representing...
Your math is impeccable, nice presentation, although very unrealistic. I am a parishioner. I also have children in the school, my nephews and nieces. My daughter is a teacher there. But I am also a resident of 101 East Vista Avenue. So you can imagine how I feel about this, and how all my parish feels about this. It is unrealistic because of the traffic condition. You have said that it does not impact anybody. It has an environmental impact, emotional and social impact for our children. And it will affect them, because that's something that is going to cover their view. And would also affect our school and our parish economically. And it does affect, because right now, we don't have a space to park, especially with the new building on Hillside. Trust me, if you go there, you won't find a space. This is a plea for you to consider this very hardly, because it may be good for the seniors. It's almost altruistic, but it will not be good for us and for our children, who cannot be here and speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person is Richard Rochetta.
Yes, I'm the President of Hillside Homeowners Improvement Association. Although this is outside, just on the other side of the border, I first came up here thinking about the corner of Brunswick and Hillside, and they said that there... Now, I want to make sure, and the audience should know, is there a stoplight going to be built? I know the developer's going to contribute, but I know how sometimes that goes. So we need to be a guarantee that that will be done if the project is built. The second point, when I came up, I thought, you've got to be kidding on parking. Now, of course, the ordinance states there can be that many, but that's just a minimum, I believe. It's up to you, and it's your responsibility, to make sure that there's more than that. I know every senior citizen I know has a car. There's thousands of people that live by the BART stations, they have cars.
Exactly.
You know, that doesn't mean that you're not going to have a car to go on vacation, to go shopping, to go to Costco to pick up tons of stuff. So I think it's kind of unrealistic. You might not need two-hundred, but you're going to certainly need more than fifty-nine on that. And what if a couple lives in the studio apartment? A married couple can live in a studio apartment, I would imagine, they might have two cars. So that is totally unrealistic. Growing up in Daly City fifty years ago, who would have thought that a one-car garage with no, particularly on the east side of town, wouldn't, would have eventually two cars or three cars or four cars? So you've got to think about the future of this, too. So you've just got to consider that, and consider these as minimum standards. And again, your responsibility is to make sure that you don't impact the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rochetta. That's the last one that I had. I do have Mr. Jesus. Maybe you can come back up and answer some of the questions that you caught, and you'd be the last one.
I appreciate the opportunity to try to clarify a couple of things. We're very sensitive to the impacts that can occur during a construction cycle. We anticipate that a project of this size will take approximately eighteen months to complete. But as you know, before a construction project can commence, there has to be an identification of a person to contact in the event there are issues or questions or concerns about what is occurring. And so we will identify such a person and provide the ability of that person to be contacted. But more than that, I think it'll be important for us to have a conversation with the appropriate officials at the nearby school, so that we can coordinate construction activity, mindful of what's taking place at the school, and mindful about what we can do to educate ourselves and also educate the school about what is likely to happen, so that we can be proactive and not simply respond to conditions or simply allow things to unfold. We need to be more proactive than simply a passive role. There was a question about Section Eight, and this is an affordable housing project, which means that if a senior has a Section Eight certificate and is interested in this place of residence, that person can apply that certificate to this place. And as you know, that affords a significant reduction in rent if one has a, a certificate. We appreciate the issues of circulation and understand the concerns about what's going to happen at Hillside and Brunswick, but as the analysis indicated, this project is identified as having a two percent impact on that, on that signal, which really represents the fact that it's an existing condition that is pretty severe already, and is why the city has contemplated the installation of a signal whether or not this project goes forward. So I think that the fact that we're able to contribute financially may, may allow the city to move that up a little bit from its schedule. We don't control that, and we're not indicating that we're responsible for that, but we will pay our fair share. Parking, of course, is understandably noted. However, I would comment that the city's own regulations stipulate how parking is to be treated when a senior project, an affordable senior project, is involved. And by your own regulations, the adjustments that are shown on that table come into play. It's not as if it's something that has been pulled out of the air or has been just arbitrarily identified. The city's regulations stipulate what is shown there. Now, were this a market rate project, were this a different type of project? Those discounts would not be considered and should not be entertained. But as we've indicated, this is a very special project, limited to affordable conditions, meaning residents that are earning sixty percent or less. And again, as we discussed earlier, many of those residents are already without vehicles. I have served for many, many years on the Board of Directors of a nonprofit organization unrelated to this applicant, committed to affordable housing. And our experience has been that seniors, if afforded a meaningful alternative, like the shuttle service that was described here, would look very seriously at foregoing ownership of vehicles. And so that, I think, is a response to the notion that we're going to abandon them and they're going to have to walk great distances. No, the project provides for some alternative transportation methods. I think those were the areas that were identified, Mr. Sylvester, and if there are areas I missed, I would be happy to come back to you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We just picked up another card. I guess this is very important, as a Trevor Mackensall?
Sure.
How you pronounce your last name?
The last name's Masensky. Everyone just calls me Trevor, it's fine.
Masensky, wow. All right.
I have really horrible handwriting, too, so...
Mr. Masensky is representing...
I'm a consultant to the city. I'm the consultant which prepared the city document. Yes.
Okay.
So, thank you, commissioners. Actually, I just wanted to stand up and clarify a couple of items that were being covered, both in your discussions with staff, as well as the applicant and some concerns which were raised from some of the citizens. So first, I want to give... So first, I want to give a little bit of context related to how the project came about and why the Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment was prepared. Under the streamlining provisions of SB 375, that document actually teared off something called the barrier, the planned barrier, which identified priority development areas. This was one of those priority development areas called the Mission Hills Mixed-Use District, which contemplated development within this area and actually contemplated impacts associated with building out this particular area, which is why this project qualified for this level of document. Which is important because it plays into some of the concerns which have been raised here this evening related to, particularly like, traffic impacts. Knowing that traffic impacts are of concern when you do infill development, one of the provisions under SB 375 allowed us to not necessarily have to contemplate long-term cumulative impacts of traffic conditions. So those weren't analyzed here. But as a conservative measure for the city, what was actually done for the traffic studies, you'll see that there's been a reduction for parking, but none of those trip reductions were actually applied to the trip generation for the traffic study. So the, with the conservative numbers that the city calculated, there was still the level of impact associated with the project, it could still be reduced to a less insignificant level with the implementation of the signal improvement. There was a clarification about the energy efficiency associated with the building. So one of the provisions under SB 375, using this public resources code, is that there's actually 15% higher than Title 24 energy efficiency required into the building. So that goes above and beyond actually the state-level standard for your normal project, for example. And part of that is to also reduce the operational energy and air quality emissions associated with it. There was a question about construction phasing, or when the project would actually take place. It's contemplated to go from 2016 to 2017. Traffic, there wasn't analysis that was presented in the SEA related to incident reports about whether there had been any fatal crashes in the-
You haven't?
There's nothing that's documented as far as-
Didn't look it up?
Well, no, there, it actually isn't the document. And there is no incident reports that have been identified on that street as far as fatal fatalities from 2009 to 2013. Parking, parking is obviously a large consideration, actually is part of Assembly Bill 32, which was actually the greenhouse gas streamlining provisions. Parking is a consideration underneath CEQA, it was actually removed to de-emphasize the use of automobiles and ultimately reduce the impetus to want to try to plan for them. So although it's a consideration for your local community through your ordinance, the reality of implementation through the CEQA process is something that we don't necessarily evaluate, which I think is important to bring up. Oh, there was also a statement that was mentioned about economic considerations and property values. Under CEQA Guideline Section 15901, economic considerations as part of project approvals don't need to be considered, so the financial implications of a project actually don't result in a level of an environmental impact, so we don't actually discuss those in the CEQA document. Once again, it's a policy decision. Visual impacts is my last one. Visual impacts, the document did have an extensive discussion as well as visual simulations depicting the potential impacts associated with protected view sheds and scenic corridors. There are no identified scenic corridors within close proximity to the project site, nor are there any protected view sheds underneath the city's general plan, which is of importance to note. There's also case law in California to talk about private views versus public views. Private views in California is actually are not protected under California state law, public views are. So with that, I think I've clarified some of the questions that were raised here today. Is there any other questions from commissioners?
Through the chair. This is just looking at the whole thing. When we did Mission Project, Mission Street and all that, we had residential meetings with people in the neighborhood. This type of project, nobody had a meeting with the residents, the school, or anyway, we didn't call a meeting, right?
The planning commission and city councils' meetings are the-
No, 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 not that, I mean, pre, precoming-
Right, no, not that we're aware of.
Yeah, well, that's sort of, what can I tell you, there's a lot of people affected and I think what needed to be is the communication or the angst, which I'm hearing from the residents, could have been alleviated, but neither, let's forget about that. The issue at hand is definitely parking, traffic, parking, traffic, parking, traffic. And we do know that the city always does say, well, we have a condition of approval and if it's bad, we'll fix it later. I know a couple of projects that I had a question about and that was one of the things. If the parking becomes a problem, would, would, would it be a condition of approval that the planning or engineering or traffic do a six-month study to see if the streets are being blocked, if there's more on-street parking, is that a possibility?
There's no method to alleviate the answer if it's yes, is the problem. So I guess the answer is no. There's no real feasible way to do that.
Okay, all right.
So the city, you're right. So, you know, on the issue of parking, because this comes up, you know, a lot in planning, you know, division operations, the city requires that every residence, unless it's an apartment, they get to provide less, have two parking spaces of their own. A lot of parking spaces are used to store private items.
I live on these smoky streets, so I can bring you over.
Exactly. So we hear a lot of complaints about, well, there's no parking, but a lot of houses actually have two parking spaces, but they're not being used for that.
That's right.
So that's one thing that's, you know, worthy of consideration. On apartment projects-
And I just to help the people understand, and I'm not trying to be, is that this low-income qualification has to have only 59 spaces? The way the reduction, the percentages and the way the guidelines are made. So to get the affordable housing for 62 and older, we need to have this reduction in-
That's the, that's the premise behind it.
Yeah, that's the law.
Parking spaces cost money.
No, 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 I'm just trying to, I want people to understand, it's not you guys, it's not us, this is the way the law is written. To get affordable housing, you have to give something.
This zoning code, Mike?
This is the zoning ordinance we're talking about, yes. It's actually not a concession request because the project actually meets the minimum parking requirement in the zoning ordinance.
I think one thing I'd like to encourage is, somebody did mention the developer or the manager of the, forgive, free BART passes, muni passes to the residents that live in the apartments.
Well, the city's conditions of approval do one better requiring that the applicant actually provide transportation to the residents.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, over, what kind, does the city require any kind of a specific time period? I mean, they could provide it from 8 to 12, that's wonderful, but what about 12 to 5 or 5 to 8?
Right, and those sorts of details would be worked out, the condition specifically-
The city has some control over that?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. There's, that sort of a transportation program would be worked out prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Thank you.
Thank you, through the chair, if I may. So, Mike, included in those conditions of approval from the planning department, could we ask for a further traffic study? Because there, there was in, in StanTech's presentation that they, they sent to us, the details showed the existing levels of service for traffic in the area. And Hillside and Brunswick has an F level of service, when it says the standard should be no less than D. And so we currently have a problem, it's not related to the proposed development, but we have a problem in the city, basically. So is that something that we could make as an additional condition for this project that the city address the traffic in the area? Because it's not really the proposal's problem, it's the city's issue.
Right, but for the city to condition this project, there has to be a proper nexus and the staff reports already identified a condition of approval that remedies the traffic impact that the project's creating. It sounds like what you're asking for is something that the-
It's additional.
Condition for the city to do.
Through the chair, are you, just for clarification, are you requesting a condition that the city solve the problem at the intersection? Is that sort of what you're-
The problem already exists for the city.
My understanding is that they are in the process of evaluating a traffic signal at that intersection.
Right, and that, that was kind of the conversation was not just talking about the traffic signal, but actually doing something.
Right, and there's a-
I think it would mitigate some of this, not all.
Secondarily, also, Mike, regarding the city, as far as something that does specifically relate to parking within this project, would it be possible to have a condition of approval that the developer provide provision for additional parking, whether it's onsite or offsite, should additional parking be needed? So for instance, identifying parking structures that are within proximity to the area where they could provide transit for people who live in the building, should they not be able to fill, fulfill the parking requirements of the building? So say there's a parking lot that's two blocks away, providing a shuttle service to the parking lot and identifying the available parking that's available.
Yeah, something like that would be beyond the requirement that the zoning ordinance specifies. The whole idea of only requiring 59 spaces is, to be frank, so that the developer doesn't have to provide more parking, that makes many sense. The idea is that the parking, if the developer was to provide more parking spaces, those cost money and what you're talking about, there would be a financial outlay for that. And so it's a quid pro quo for the affordability that less parking be provided.
I'm just trying to look to see if there is any solution that we can, because it is a problem. We understand that it, it's a potential problem. At this point, it's not a problem because it hasn't been created.
Yeah, if I, if I may, through the chair, offer some insight is to, so usually with projects that have constraints related to parking that have identified conditions of approval for onsite shuttle services, one of the things that we've done before on other projects is actually through traffic and parking demand management plans is identify those areas within close proximity to the project. So anyone who does partake in those shuttle service can already know where available parking is, be it at a fee rate service or a market rate service.
Exactly, exactly.
So that they, you know, they don't necessarily have to be involved with the project, but it's a known resource within the community, it's a market force that's available to the residents.
Mike, aren't there a couple of city lots within about three or four blocks of this site?
There are.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that exactly addresses what I'm talking about, is at least showing what the available parking is within the area and developing a means of transporting people between the parking and the building.
That would alleviate-
That would alleviate the problem as well as, you know, it's, it's not environmentally responsible to create a situation where people are driving around the block and driving around the block and driving around the block, so.
We can incorporate in the condition related to the transportation service required, that service be provided to city parking lots where they exist.
Thank you, that would, that would answer that question.
Is there any other commission, questions for me?
Yeah, I had just one and this is for you, Mike. What I'm, oh, actually two. I'm looking at the map for Chelsea, Chelsea Court. You know, I'm a, I'm a big proponent for public safety and is it, would there really be a problem, like fire engines and police cars to turn around there?
So if, if I, if you don't mind, there is, we did, there is very formal correspondence that we have to go through to basically document whether there's adequate levels of service for emergency medical and fire response. And so in our conversations, we actually send out will-serv letters to the appropriate servicing entities. And in, actually in the document in Appendix F, there was a letter that was actually sent on May 26th that documents written correspondence from the NCFA, which indicated that, quote, "The proposed project's residential use would not affect the district's ability to deliver emergency services to the project site or the surrounding service area."
Okay, great, thank you. And one last question for this affordability, the qualification, if we were to put more parking in there, would we lose that? In other words, it would, we would lose that affordability for, under the code affordability for seniors, basically, if we say, okay, well, we'll give you 59 more parking spots, but parking costs money. So not all, I guess not all folks should, would qualify under that 60%, it's just like, it doesn't qualify anymore.
Well, the applicant would answer that question the best about what the financial implications of additional parking would be, but in theory, the answer would, is yes.
It would probably move it out of the affordability range, yes, because those parking spaces, they cost money.
Yeah, this, the, the two parking garage levels have been very carefully planned to include as many parking spaces as, as is required. And so even one additional space, I think it would be a fair statement, would, yes, you know, be problematic to making the site work. It's 59 spaces is what the engineer who designed the parking garages came up with and the unit count has been developed around that.
Okay.
Through the chair, if you don't mind, just to provide some context. If the, if there was a market rate housing project on this exact same site, actually the parking requirements and the analysis actually wouldn't cover that project. So it couldn't be something that could be contemplated here. And the reason being is simply that if it was a market rate project through a condition, the trip generation rates associated with the project would actually probably be about 43% higher than those associated with the proposed application.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right.
Any other questions, commissioners?
All right, thank you.
With that being said, I would now request a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Would like to recommend that the planning commission forward to the city council the following recommendation. Adopt the findings as outlined herein. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Didn't we amend something?
We, I thought that was coming. It's in the conditions when we get to the-
Was it the conditions? Okay.
It was in the conditions, yes. Adopt the Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment and Associated Mitigation Monitoring Plan and Reporting Program. So moved. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lastly, to approve use permit UPR-7-14-9291 and design review DR-7-14-9292, subject to conditions of approval, outlined herein with the addition- With the addition of a provision for shuttle between additional parking structures that exist within the city that are, would be available.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Taller Rico?
Aye.
Crump?
Aye.
Edelman?
Yes.
Satori?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Just one thing, question, when will this be brought up to the, I wonder what will be brought up to this?
City Council, December 14th.
December 14th, City Council?
Yeah, I forgot to ask on the first one, when will that be, the seat in?
Seat in same day.
Fourteenth.
Just, just a reminder to all you people that are here, please, if we pass it on, the city council just takes a recommendation. So if you all want to come back and say your concerns, I welcome you.
The city will renotice for the-
Right, the city will renotice you, so you come back, okay?
Thank you, Commissioner Taller Rico, and a quick comment that I'll, I have to commend Commissioner Edelman for that extra condition, I think that's an excellent idea.
Yes.
Try, try to figure out a way to make it work. Okay, so the motion is passed, okay. Moving on. I hope we give the folks some time to- Try to look for solutions if there exists, so hopefully that helps, yeah.
I know.
I said, oh, okay, we want to, you know.
It's Guido, you're on, huh?
Do you bring some cannolis?
Oh, God, is this time a nice, I have to stay up past my bedtime, that's what they seem to do.
I don't think that one's, there are some-
That went outside.
I'm not sure where they're all located, but I know there are some city-owned lots that are like within two blocks.
Thing is-
Parking, parking is a problem. Parking's a problem in places that have parking, it's a problem. Exactly.
It is everywhere, that's why I think, when I go to Respey, build a garage at Crown and get 200 extra parking spaces, even though it takes two-thirds of the members, I'll bet you I get 90%.
Hey, Mike?
Yeah, I do need.
Oh, yeah, right, next to the, next to the school they just demolished. That one? The one by seven, mercy, yeah.
It's seventy-five.
What?
It's a, it's a church down there on East Market, San Pedro.
Which one?
Holy Angels?
Holy Angels.
Yeah, Holy Angels, yeah.
Oh, that's the one, right, yeah, okay.
Right across the street from that is a solar panel or something. And underneath solar panels, it's on empty lot.
Yes. That was school district property and actually we declared it surplus property at one time.
Good evening, planning commission. Tonight is a major subdivision and design review for a twenty-unit condo project at eighty-nine Second Avenue. Just to provide some background, this is a former nursery site. They are proposing the twenty-unit condo project with sub grade parking. This, the property has a general plan and zoning designation of high density, thirty-five to fifty dwelling units per acre. There also is a housing opportunity site. This is the project vicinity map, very eclectic mix of different uses and different residential properties in the area. This is some of the general architecture overview. These are two-bedroom flats to two-level bedroom townhouses. The overall contemporary appearance of the building is intended to complement the scale and mix of housing types in the immediate neighborhood. The overall architecture is of painted stucco walls, front facades articulated by hardwood planks, and a variety of rooftop decks and cantilevered wood frame windows. This is another architectural rendering of the site. For projects of this scope, they have to follow the R-three section of the code which mandates a hundred and fifty square feet of open space per unit. So that equates to approximately three thousand square feet. This can be achieved through a variety of ways, including patios and rooftop decks which the applicant is proposing. Since this is a condominium project, based on the condominium ordinance, a use permit is required. And the findings of fact can be made for the condo project and can be found on page three of the staff report. There, the required number of parking spaces for a condo with twenty two-bedroom units is forty. There are forty units, forty parking spaces being provided. Earlier in the week, there was some discussion in relationship to the circulation of the parking, which we can speak at length. But in either case, it complies with the parking ordinance. The applicant is required to provide affordable either units or pay a fee. They are choosing to pay the fee based on the affordable housing ordinance of twenty-two dollars per square foot. As a former nursery site, they were required to provide a phase-one analysis to the city. There is potential within the first one to two feet of topsoil for chemicals. A lot of the conditions of approval are written such that if certain things are found, they have to comply with the county health department. So that will be dealt with during the building stage. This project is exempt from CEQA per section one-five-three-three-two as an infill development. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the major subdivision, design review, and use permit to the city council for approval. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Persicconi. Any questions from any commissioners?
Through the chair.
Yes, Mr. Tyler Rico.
As usual, we get, traffic is my best thing. Traffic. So where were the, the parking's on the ground? Forty-two, did you say? Forty. And there's how many condos? I'm sorry?
Twenty.
Twenty. So that's two per condo, that's regulation zoning piece. Where will they go in and where will they come out? Third, Castle, or Second and Castle? What is the slope?
The original idea was to come off second. The applicant.
Come in second or come off?
The idea, the original idea is that there will be one way, at least from the city staff's perspective, one-way traffic flow underneath this building.
Yeah.
However, the parking dimension provided is actually twenty-six feet from space to space. It can provide for two-way traffic flow. There's been a discussion the architects had with the staff about possibly widening the garage door. That may or may not be necessary. It's not a huge number of parking spaces.
They're saying they're going to come in Second Avenue and come out Third.
Well, we're probably going to let them have in and out on both streets. Castle Street's not affected.
Right, I was over there and the, the area is, really needs to be developed. I was here in nineteen eighty-five when that was a greenhouse. And they're going to have a lot of plant digging in the soil. But anyway, one of the things I'm going to bring up because I know it's going to come from the people. All car, a lot of people were parking all along Third and all along Castle because it's been a vacant lot. I'm not saying we can resolve it. I'm just telling them it's going to develop in those twenty-two or thirty cars that parked there and been parking there since nineteen eighty-two. So just to let everybody know, we're well aware that once you lose the vacant lot to the condominium, even though they have their own parking, the street parking is probably going to be restricted.
Well, the street parking theoretically would not be impacted. Each of the units provides two parking spaces. We're trying to keep that the entrance, the garage entrances to a minimal dimension. Usually for twenty, I think they propose a sixteen-foot entry. That ought to be sufficient.
No, I'm just bringing that to us.
Yeah.
Get it out of the way that I know that was going to be the answer. I just want the people on TV and here to hear that, don't worry, parking is taken care of. Thank you.
Just point of information, Michael. These in-lu fees that are paid, do those, what are they used for? Do they just go into the general fund?
No, those are put in a fund that's specifically earmarked for, earmarked for the provision of affordable housing, whether that be, you know, the city contributing toward a project or acquiring land in the future. They're not, they don't go right to the general.
Gotcha. That's good.
Other commissioners, questions? Okay, we do have a few cards. With the permission, my fellow commissioners, I would like to open this matter up.
So moved.
Do it.
Thank you. All right, first card we have, Mr. Richard Rochetta. Hillside homeowners.
Yeah, one of the concerns we have is if the cars are coming out, no matter which way they decide that they come out, there's no traffic control on Castle and Second and Third. There's going to be a lot more traffic coming out. There's no stop signs, no four ways there. There's one on Third. So, and I know, I don't know if it's, would be the obligation of the developer to buy some, pay for some four-by-fours and stop signs, but I think the city should, it should be recommended that the city put at least on those two streets there because now you're going to get more traffic, traffic now. People are going on Mission Street, going on Hillside on there. So that's, that's the one thing. That's about the only comment I have, other than making sure that there's no way that they can use that inside for storage. If they're, if it's for parking, it should be for parking. Get them off the streets and in there and probably going to have more cars anyway. But that's the one concern, that you don't want to use those or be being blocking off and using them for storage. That's about the only, I don't, I don't, live there, I travel on there, but there might be some other comments that you might want to listen to.
Rich, in other words, you're saying in essence that you would like the city to, their CCNRs to reflect that the garage spaces cannot be used for storage.
If that's what, if that's what needs to be done, definitely on that. And that the city, I don't know if the developer would be paying for stop sign, we're not talking about stop lights, but stop signs there, or the city should put up some four-by-fours and some stop signs on there. It shouldn't be too much of an expense. Thank you.
Any other questions? We didn't, oh, this is public hearing.
Yeah.
I mean, I had one. Thank you, Mr. Rochetta. Next is Mr. Jesus Siradik? Soria, welcome, sir.
Same concern, parking. Those is going to be open space, the parking? The parking lot do you have? Open space to you? Question to you.
I'm not understanding the question.
You don't understand?
Oh, the, no, the parking underneath the building is exclusively for the people who live inside the building.
But it's going to be open, wide open, no closing, no garage closing, no nothing?
No, it's inside a parking garage underneath the building.
But it's going to be wide open. The reason is.
Wide open, yes. Each of the stalls does not have its own garage door, if that's.
The question is for you because when people come to you, you laugh and you try like, okay, you know, look in different ways. So I direct it to you.
Okay. Let's understand your question. So each of the parking spaces is open in an open parking garage?
Okay, it's going to be wide open, no garage opening, no, no, it's going to be no door. Because otherwise, no matter how much parking that you have because the car's going to be ended to the street and everybody is going to be affected. The gentleman says also it's going to be no stop signs on the corners. And it's hard for the city to put a stop sign. People like, we have the high school right in the corner.
Sir, sir, okay. You're asking a few questions. Let's first address the issue about the open garage or something. Is that true that was going to be like a gate and the residents would go into the gate, the gate would open?
That's right.
Okay.
There would be essentially at, along Third and along Second, there would be a roll-up door. That's the only garage doors there would be. So each space would not have a roll-up door.
Good, okay.
That would, you know.
But it would be a closed garage.
It would be a closed garage, not accessible to the public.
All right. The, you're concerned also about the stop signs as to what Mr. Rich brought up and that's still on the table to be discussed as well.
We have the high school right in the corner. You know, kids driving like crazy over there, both streets, both streets, they're running like, but you don't live there. That's why you don't, you don't care. You can put more units. We don't want no more units.
All right, Mr. Soria, okay, do you have any other concerns?
That's it, but only this thing.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
I know it's like wasting my time here. I know it's going to go under the table, that's it.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, the, next is Ms. Elena Cross.
We live, we will be living right next door to this monstrosity. It's huge. Way too huge for that area. The rooftop decks will look right down into my yard. I like to sit outside on my little deck. Won't be able to do that. And what about, where will they be picking up the trash? They pick up Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at apartments around the corner from us, and it's very, very noisy. And as for two cars per unit, we all know if there's a two-bedroom unit, there's going to be at least six or eight people in there that are going to have cars. There's two houses around the corner from us that had two bedrooms. The city has allowed them to put in-law units downstairs. There's no parking now. We have to keep our cars in our driveway. Our guests can't park anywhere. Our family can't park anywhere. It's just, it's even a quality of life. The back fence will go right against my house. That'll be their backyards, if I understand this picture right. That's going to be very noisy. Our bedrooms are there. And where, where is the trash going to be picked up at? Second Avenue, Third Avenue?
A detail like that would be worked out with allied waste at the time of construction. The applicant has indicated a dedicated trash storage area and then the trash will be brought to the street on trash day.
Like all apartment buildings.
Just like all apartment.
And is there going to be an onsite manager there?
No, this is a condominium building, so there's not a requirement for that.
And there's no parking now. Where would these people park? The stock, Castle Street in the afternoons is terrible. We get all the traffic coming from JFK, Guadalupe, Thornton School, Polisito School, people coming from Jack in the Box, Taco Bell. And there's no stop, there's one stop arterial and there isn't any from Castle down to, right across, is what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cross. That's the last card we have on item number three. There were a few concerns that came up before we closed the public hearing. Well, unless there's any, anything else, let's go with the closing of the public hearing at this time.
So moved.
A second. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I have a question regarding the stop signs. Is that something that that's feasible for Second and Castle or Third Street? It's just a question.
Sure. This is something we can actually talk to the, the city's traffic engineer tomorrow about. If there's not a stop sign there, we can take a look. I don't know if there's a warrant for that.
Just go straight through, right, because Castle, I would think is.
It's highly unlikely, however, that this project itself would be triggering the need for that. And so to condition this project to put it in, even though, I mean, the cost of that's fairly minimal, it's something that needs to be warranted. And the city traffic engineer could tell us that pretty quickly.
He would have to study the flow of traffic from the streets and everything and then.
Well, we also have from oral testimony from one of the residents that this is apparently a very busy street at times, so it might actually be warranted before any units are added.
It's also possible the traffic committee would look at this, which would be included in public works as well as the city engineer.
Mr. Persicconi, would you kindly bring up the rendition as to the photo? Right there. Would there be egress to the units from that side? In other words, can, I see stairs there. Can they come out?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so it's a possibility that folks may not park in the back or downstairs, but they'll park out there on the street.
Well, if they've got an open space in the garage, I doubt they would, but yeah.
They're, they're paid for two parking spaces. That's what, yeah, when they buy their condominium.
But if they've got three cars, that one of them's going to have to go somewhere outside.
But the city doesn't, excuse me, I'm sorry, the city doesn't do any inspections to make sure that the condominium person is not using it for storage, or do they?
Well, I think the storage aspect, I mean, somebody, that's just a vision, my thought.
We should mention the applicants also here that can answer specific questions about the, you know, the parking space and.
Well, I think we can take care of using a parking space for storage by adding
Oh, absolutely.
that requirement in the CCNRs.
Right in the CCNRs. I don't think anybody would object to that.
They must be used for parking.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that handles that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
So actually, I sit on the HOA board. We do monitor parking inside garages.
Be a CCNR violation.
So, yeah.
We'd like to recommend that the planning commission forward to the city council the following recommendation. Adopt the findings as outlined herein.
Oh, I, I moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's a missing line there.
Those are somewhere.
All those in favor say aye. Affirm the environmental assessment. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Six, approve major subdivision sub-five-one-five-one-zero-eight-seven-five. Use permit UPR-one-zero-one-five-one-one-six-nine-nine and design review DR-five-one-five-one-zero-eight-seven-seven, subject to the conditions of approval identified herein, being amended to include.
The provision in the CCNRs.
Provision in the CCNRs to.
Ensure that parking spaces are used for parking and not for storage.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Tyler Rico.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Edelman.
Yes.
Satori.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes. Motion passed, and I assume this is going before December fourteenth. Okay, thank you. All right.
I hope council brings sleeping bags.
Santa Claus is coming.
We had to do, we had to go through this, so.
Yes, that's right. Nature suggested to take.
Last item is item number four. Use permit UPR. Use permit UPR-one-zero-one-five-one-one-seven-three-six, and Mr. Lockhouse, you have the floor.
Did you change the machine?
Yeah. So this, this application is a variance, let me just reboot this real quick. You can just wait two minutes.
Yes, we can wait, thank you. I'll charge you by the hour.
You're going to double your rate? You're going to double your rate, charging by the hour for going over?
Dollar forty-five.
Well, after eight-thirty, my bedtime, I need to charge double time.
I'm missing my scotch.
That's what we need to have, with the water, a good single malt.
Single malt, I'm with you.
Or as my friend who lives in Scotland would tell you, there's no such thing as Scotch, that's whiskey.
That's right, I forgot that. Oh, did they put the heat up and I'm dying? You what? Okay, thank you, I thought I was getting flashes.
We can't see his password anyway.
Oh, thank God, they're eight arms on this, this place is.
I'm getting them all.
That's broadcast to the whole city.
Oh, good, that's good.
Watch how remember some tell them.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, good, let's see those emails, sixty minutes next week.
Pretty pictures.
Click, okay, click again. Click. Oops. Oh, very good, Michael, gee.
Damn.
I remember. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
It's a repetitive stress.
So this is a use permit request, it's actually a sign program. The city allows deviations from the regular sign regulations when they make sense via a sign program. And in the case of five oh five Skyline, a service station that's presently under construction, we have directed the applicant to apply for a sign program to allow for some additional signage. And we'll go over the reasons why we think it makes sense. You're probably familiar with the site, it's at the southeast corner of Skyline Drive and Westmore Avenue. Adjacent uses are residential, single-family detached homes. Highway thirty-five lies to the east of the site. The view, the overhead shows a view, and what we're trying to show here is some of the issues of visibility for the sign, the signs that are proposed. Visibility from southbound Highway thirty-five is not a problem. But when we look at the northbound direction, and it's kind of hard to see, and maybe that's the point, is that the building that's under construction here, you can see the wood frame, the sign would actually be behind it, so at the current height regulation, which is twenty-two feet, the sign would be obscured by the building. And so, of course, the applicant's in the job of selling gasoline to people who are traveling by, and they need to know there's a gasoline station there. So we've directed, he applied for a sign program, and that's what we're looking at tonight. The existing condition at the intersection is that there is an existing, Skyline Plaza itself has a highway-oriented sign. This sign is, exceeds actually thirty feet in its current condition. So there's some precedence for allowing some taller signs in the area. The Valero Station, and that's what it's proposed to be branded as, a sign would actually be located, again, behind this wood frame construction, but would project over the height of the building so as to allow for highway or freeway visibility. This is an overview of the sign program, there are a number of signs that are included inside the program. The only ones that don't comply with the allowed zoning ordinance sign regulations are the height of the Valero sign, the size of it as proposed. The applicant's proposed a reader board, a sign here, which we are recommending that not be allowed. And, but the Monument sign, these other signs actually already comply with the sign regulations. So this is a progress, sign program overview, we're not going to go through each one of these numbers, but the applicant's proposed a pretty large deviation from the allowable sign area. This is what this table shows, the planning commissioners, what's allowed and what's proposed, and what we've recommended. And so we've actually required or recommended that the planning commission adopt a smaller pole sign. The applicant's proposed essentially a thirteen-by-thirteen square foot sign. We've recommended that come down to a ten-by-ten. They've requested that sign be a thirty-foot height, we've recommended a twenty-seven-foot height. We're trying to keep the minimal impact to the neighborhood. Essentially, the bottom line is that the deviation that the city staff's recommending is a thirty-five percent deviation, which isn't a terribly large deviation, it's not double as proposed. So we've taken a look at this application, and we do think it merits your approval. The proposal is exempt from CEQA, and we're recommending the planning commission forward to the city council an adoption of the findings, affirmation of the environmental assessment, and approval of the use permit, subject to the conditions of approval. If there's any questions, we can answer those.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Mike, when I first looked at this, the first thing that struck me are the signage that will go on what would be the front, the pump side of the station. Is anything done to those signs to lower their light value and lessen their impact on the housing across the street?
Sure, that's a good question. The original conditions of approval for the gasoline station had, had conditions related to signs which are still in place. Those restrict the illumination of any signs that are facing southward, that are on the canopy, as well as illumination. So these signs will not be lit, and that more specifically would be the smog and lube sign cannot be lit, and these signs can't be lit, and those are still in place, and we're recommending those remain non-illuminated. There's no proposed illuminated signs facing west.
What about the foods sign?
That, this sign would be allowed to be illuminated. And that would be actually located here underneath a heavily lit canopy, yeah, and the lighting from the canopy would probably wash out any effect that it would have, so.
Through the chair.
Sure.
Congratulations on not allowing the reading sign, the LED.
Yeah, and the LED would come off the pole sign, too.
Driving in different cities. Now, I'm going to ask very, let me say segue a question. We're not going to see car washing come here anytime.
Car washing is not proposed or approved.
Okay. I'm just.
Yeah.
Every gas station after three years, almost, all right, thank you.
No, these people are rebuilding, but not, they're not shell.
Any other questions from any commissioners? Being there is none, I'd like to open it now for public hearing. I have one card, and that's Mr. Vaughn Jones.
At long last. I'm Vaughn Jones, president of the Skyline Palisades Homeowners Association. People on the west side have looked at a hideous wrecked building on that site for very nearly fifteen years, and we're so delighted that finally a new business that's very attractive is going up there. The Skyline Palisades Board reviewed this issue, and we find no fault with it, and I'm speaking in behalf of the applicant, and I hope you approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Being, being that we have no other cards, I would like to close the public hearing at this time.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We would like to recommend that the planning commission forward to the city council the following recommendation. Adopt the findings as outlined herein, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Five, affirm the environmental assessment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lastly, approve use permit UPR-one-zero-one-five-one-one-seven-three-six, the sign program, subject to the conditions of approval outlined herein.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Taller Rico?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Edelman?
Yes.
Satori?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes. Motion passed. Would that be December fourteenth for the city council? Thank you, sir.
Fourteenth, that's right. That's going to be a busy one.
Any public appearances, staff communications, acquisitions, vacations, and et cetera? Request a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is now adjourned, thank you so much, everyone.